Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Simpson County Board of Education. I'm Jim Flynn Superintendent and I'd like to welcome everyone here in the audience and those watching on television at home as we conduct the business of the Simpson County School District. I'd like to make just a few announcements. First, we held our 50th annual or anniversary of our 50th Franklin Simpson Invitational Band Competition on Saturday, September 8th, and we hosted many bands from the areas and hundreds, probably thousands of supporters that came up and had a huge crowd on hand and want to congratulate Mr. Nash and the band, marching band program and all the band booster parents and for all their great work and wish them well in their marching season this year. Another opportunity for Simpson County Schools and students to showcase our district was at the Wildcat Wilderness Run, held by our cross-country team on Saturday, September 1st, and we appreciate everybody who helped pull that together, Coach Rom and the student athletes and the parents, and then a lot of the staff came out, in fact, Mr. Schlosser, Mr. Grover and I timed, and Mr. Willhite was out there helping, and it was a great event, beautiful weather, of course, it was wonderful and everybody had a good time. Like to wish good luck to the Franklin Simpson High School Choir as they perform at the Fall Concert tonight at 7:00. If we get our business done quickly, maybe we get over there and catch the show, but we get a preview here in just a little bit, and we so appreciate you all being here and looking forward to what you all share with us. Also like to congratulate Franklin Simpson alum Mary Joyner for winning her fifth career golf title at the USA Intercollegiate Golf Tournament and breaking the Lady Topper Golf Program record for 54-hole score at 208, and I think I saw on Twitter she earned her sixth Conference USA Golfer of the Week Award, which is also a record for a WKU lady golfer. So congratulations, Mary. Congrats to the, our district athletic director, Matthew Willhite, for being named to the WKU Athletic Hall of Fame, and he was an All-American Baseball Player at WKU, and well-deserved honor for a very wonderful person. So congratulations, Mr. Willhite. High attendance day was today for Kentucky Schools and elementary, middle and high school schools across the Commonwealth competed for a chance to win awards based on their school's attendance performance, and student attendance for Simpson County Schools has been up this year, and we're on track for a record year, and this is very important to us because first and foremost, we can't teach our students if they're not present, but secondly, it's a very important habit to develop for success in life, no matter what you do, and so we want to help all of our students graduate life-ready and developing strong attendance habits is part of that vision we have. So far, our results from today were just over 96%, 96.19%, and our overall winner was Franklin Simpson Middle School with an attendance rate of just a smidgen under 97% at 96.94. So congratulations to the middle school. I'd also like to give a special thanks to the Simpson County Conservation District and in particular, I'd like to recognize their District Operations Manager, Michelle Estes, for their partnership with Simpson County Schools. We appreciate their assistance in providing conservation and agriculture education and experiences to our students such as Feeding Kentucky STEM Adventures, which involves multiple activity stations for our students, and we've been teaching that, I believe, at Lincoln Elementary. This past April, 4th grade students were able to participate in a great day of learning about conservation and agriculture, and most recently, the Simpson County Conservation District assisted with the Watershed Project at Simpson Elementary School, and we're about to wrap that up, but have a beautiful wall that was constructed there, a landscaping wall will help us with that wet area around the school, and we're really appreciative of our partnership. Their programming has extended from preschool all the way through high school, and we can look forward to continuing that partnership with the Simpson County Conservation District. In fact, one of the interesting things I was reading is that, look at their annual report, they brought in over $600,000 to our community's support in agriculture and conservation efforts, and 94% of those funds went to landowners in Simpson County, so those investments go back to the community, so kudos to Michelle and her team. The KSBA Scholarship Opportunity, once again, is available for the eighth consecutive year. The Board of Directors of the Kentucky School Boards Association will fund two $2,500 scholarships for eligible Kentucky high school seniors to attend any two- or four-year credit college or university. One non-redundable scholarship will be awarded to a male and a female student, eligible students are those who would be the first members of their immediate families, parents, guardians, siblings, to complete degree requirements from an institution of higher ed. Eligibility must be affirmed and signed by the high school guidance counselor and the school district's board chairperson and superintendent. The one-page application must be completed and signed by the guidance council received by the Simpson County Board of Education by Wednesday, October 10th, in order to be processed by the deadline outlined by KSBA, and the applications can be picked up at the high school or here at the central office. And so, I'd like to commend our board chair and president of the Kentucky School Boards Association, Mr. Webster, for making that kind of opportunity happen, so good job. It's our favorite time of year, homecoming next week, and no one does homecoming like Franklin Simpson. There'll be many activities and festivities leading up to Friday's parade and pep rally and game, and this year's theme is the happiest week on turf. The parade will begin around 1:30 next Friday. Make sure everyone sits down in their floats, stay back behind the railing, keep Mr. Schlosser and I from having heart failure, and have a good time. And we look forward to it. We're going to host the Allen County Scottsville Patriots. The game will begin about 7:00, and what time will other activities?
6:40.
6:40, if you want to catch all the other activities, so come on up early. Maybe there's a lot of tailgating going on. We'll have a good week, have a safe week. We still need to learn and progress that way, too, but let's have a really good time. Remember, no school tomorrow at Simpson County Schools. We're hosting our parent-teacher conferences. In fact, they're going on right now in all of our schools, and then we'll continue into the morning and encourage all of our parents to come and partner with us. If you can't come, parents, remember, you can contact the school, we'll set up a parent-teacher conference, or there's lots of ways for us to share information about how your child is doing. Fall break is scheduled for the first week of October, the week of October 1st. It's a great opportunity for our staff and students to sharpen the saw, come back refreshed and ready to go, and we hope everyone has a relaxing and safe, fun fall break. Remember that Community Ed is offering a Fall Break CSI Camp, October 3rd and 4th for 4th through 6th grade students. Registration is $25, includes lunch and a camp tee-shirt, is limited to the first 15 participants. You need to register by Thursday, September 27th, and you can call 270-586-4484. And we'd like to thank you for the class sponsors, which are Community Ed, Simpson County 4-H, and the Franklin Police Department. That concludes my announcements. I'll turn it over to Mr. Webster to get us started.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I'd like to welcome all of you on behalf of the Board of Education. It's good to see the choir with us today. Good to see any student in here on board me tonight. We're going to call this meeting to order, and the first order of business is to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Aye. Seconded by Nancy. Any changes to the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the Hunt Ford fundraiser, donate lunch money and drive for your school with Ms. Ann Jackson.
We had a wonderful day with the Hunt Ford Drive for Your School event, and so Ann Leslie Jackson is here, and we'd like to ask you to come forward, and thank you.
Thank you. Today was Drive for Your School, which I think we ended up about $6,000, $7,000. This is the presentation for the Backpack Program Check for the event we did back in the spring to fund the Backpack Program for this. I know we raised $10,000 from community members, so Hunt Ford decided to match those donations. So we're giving $10,000 to the Backpack Program, and we just appreciate everybody's, I mean, this is the easy part.
Somebody who's good, who's competitive.
This is the easy part, so we just appreciate you guys' support on teaching our kids.
Want to get up here and put the board?
No.
Stand right here. Thank you so much. So this goes to our Backpack Program, and we send backpacks home, children in on Fridays throughout the school year to help ensure that all of our students have something to eat over the weekends, and then today, with the Drive for Your School, the proceeds go to support our family resource and youth service centers in our school district, which they help students and families with lots of programs that break down barriers to learning success. And so, I often say, a community gets the schools it wants, and it's so nice to live in a community that wants great schools and shows it through this kind of generosity. So, thanks again, Hunt Ford and Ann Leslie Jackson.
Fantastic. Next is the presentation of teaching and learning from Franklin Simpson High School.
We got Mr. Schlosser in his boot.
First, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come. The only thing I'm disappointed about is Ms. Petty. I thought I was going to get to directing tonight, she worked with me on planning the board. She's going to be guarded, but she's decided to come on over. But if you do get a chance from the meetings over, they're having their choir concert this Saturday, tonight at the high school gym, and without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Petty and the Advanced Choir.
They have 10 students going next week, Thursday night, to do a live audition for NBA Allstate, and this is their audition piece that you have to sing in quartets, okay? One on each part, and solo singing, and you have to side read. So that is coming up next week. These kids are awesome, they're very talented, and we work super hard. Terrific.
They are.
So they'll be back next month?
Okay, the next is the visitor's comments. Do you have anyone who'd like to speak?
These are some young ladies back here, y'all in class?
Yes, we are SEP students.
Yeah, we're welcome. We love our SEP students, so we hope you're having a great experience.
We are.
Next is the superintendent's staff reports.
Okay, to keep the board and community up to date with various reports and key metrics in our district, we have the following reports. First, we have our ADA, our Attendance and dropout reports. Dr. Gilbert's here, if you have any questions. We also have our personnel report, and Dr. McIntosh is here, if you have any questions on it. Next is our out-of-district student trips, out-of-district staff and administrative travel reports, and then we have our series of financial reports, daycare, food service, athletics, our vendor report, our monthly reconciliation report, our construction reconciliation, our monthly visa charge reports, so and Chief Financial Officer, Amanda Spears, is here, any questions on those? Next, you have our AP scores and program review.
Questions? You all look at me. It seems like we had fewer numbers of kids participating last year, but the percentage of the kids getting three or better was higher. That was encouraging, and it looks like most every class that we offered for the AP courses, we were doing better than the state. Did I interpret that correctly?
Yes.
That's awesome.
The numbers are bad, but there's a difference.
I wondered about that, because then a couple of slides down, or dual credit, we have lots of participation.
That's why I should put that in there, because you can see that.
That's awesome.
Because there's more dual credit, and there's more dual credit offerings, and there's more, you know, there's colleges and Sky are offering more, and so more kids are taking advantage of that, and so it's starting to bounce out a little bit, and we've seen that trend going that way for a couple years, but the kids have already been, for changes, went up, so.
How did the, how does the teaching staff at the high school feel about that? Do they feel good about that, or they?
Yeah, I think they're okay with it. I mean, it's, you know, at first, there was a little bit of alarm, like, oh, AP's going to like, go away and we're not going to, we're not going to have AP where everybody's going to go to dual credit, but I don't, I don't think it's going that direction. But no, that seemed to be kind of.
Okay.
I think, I think what we're, you know, finding is that, you know, students are going to gravitate to where they think their needs can be best met, and so there are some of our students that that need's going to be best met through AP, you know, especially students that might want to apply and attend elite universities, you know, across the country, then they're probably going to want to take advantage of the AP courses. Students that are going to, you know, attend, you know, locally or regionally or in the state, it may be either or, you know, if they want to compete for the best scholarships, they might need AP or a combination, or the dual credit will be just fine for what their goals are. So I think having both is really good, and we'll probably see those numbers, you know, just kind of move around a little bit based on the students and their goals, but I'm proud of the fact that we have a robust both.
Yes.
And that's really hard sometimes, because those numbers move around and you have to have some smaller classes sometimes to try to meet, you know, some students' needs, but I'm really proud of the fact that we have a nice, robust offering of AP, and of course, we have a robust offering of dual credit. And then you can see that we had one student that was a national AP scholar, Will Randolph. Of course, he was also a national merit finalist. I should have mentioned, I think I just saw, and I'll go ahead and make the announcement, I haven't seen the official letter, but I heard that Chaz Bency was a national merit semifinalist.
Got that yesterday.
Yeah, so Chaz is a senior this year, so, you know, it's really good to see our kids achieving and having those opportunities, so, and I could tell, I had met with my student advisory council twice now, and one of the things they talked about was the AP programming. They, you know, they're really interested in that we maintain that, and, but I've heard some schools talk about, you know, maybe just moving to dual credit only. I think we need to try to maintain both.
We have some kids that do both. I felt they'll use AP, and they'll also do, depending on what they are going to do in college, some will stay AP, strictly AP, some will go straight to a credit, and some do both. They take AP and dual credit. They do a little bit of both depending on what their major is going to be in college and what the universities will accept and take, and what, you know, you see some of that in the math and sciences, as, you know, like if they're, you know, one example I can give you is if a student thinks he's going to go to law school, and he's going to be a history, political science major, a lot of times they'll take college algebra, they'll take the AP, or they'll take the college algebra at Sky CTC and not do it like AP calculus. But if they're a math, science person, they stay in that track and maybe take dual credit English at Sky, and I'll take the AP English type, right? Just depends on the student.
Well, I was really pleased to see that our kids are engaged, and obviously, our teachers are engaged, and even though we had less participation in those courses, we had improved, much improved significantly in the pass rate, so it just lets me know that everybody's really committed to that, and I thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. The next report is our Learning Community Day Report from September 5th, and Shalina Smith is here, and Leanne Fisher put that report together, so do you have any questions on it?
No, just to comment, I really like seeing those reports, because it's really interesting to see what everybody is doing and how they're spending their day.
It was definitely a big day, and it's like, I can relate it to kind of putting on a wedding, you know, a lot of planning and preparation goes on to make those dates go smoothly, and I know that Dr. Flynn, you all planned to make the schools a charge to be pro-college graduate, and what we really want, and it's nice seeing some of our schools like Mr. Schlosser starting to engage our staff in those conversations, so that's the really neat part of it, you know, that you kind of all see that come together on one day, and you need to go to all the schools, which I usually do.
That's good.
The next report is our quarterly, portal usage report from Infinite Campus in the parent portal. Mr. Gilbert's here, if you have any questions there. They are coming out with some new apps soon, and Joey's going to try those out, and then once we kind of get those out, we'll get.
The existing apps will still work, so during the interim, it's just they won't be supported anymore, so as updates occur, they'll eventually become obsolete, so once the new apps are out and we're able to get in and play with them, we will at the appropriate time then release them to the parents, and they'll have to replace the old apps.
Thank you, and I look forward to kind of seeing how those work, because I know our parents and students really like to have access to their up-to-date information, so that's good. We have our first post-secondary plan report for the class of 2019, and there that we have about 57% right now that are talking about going, let's see, going directly into the workforce, and have, you could see that about, what, 15, what, 15 and a half percent? Those numbers are little, I need to move down here. Who can read that better? Mr. Webster, you've had Lasik surgery. Blow it up here. Okay, let's see. Yeah, 57% are going to go to a four-year college or university. It looks, 20, yeah, 23% are going to two-year college or tech schools, and then we have 15.5% that are planning to go directly into the workforce, and then they have a military breakdown there, and you can see what our kids are planning on doing if they're going into the military, though I don't see the percentage of that right off, but.
For the Army or the ROTC?
Oh, I'm talking about total up here, this is the military, right?
Well, Air Force is 30.8%.
Is it at the bottom? Oh.
No, that's just each one of them.
Air Force, Army, Coast Guard.
Oh, seven, okay, seven. So you can see this, here's the actual numbers, then. Forty-five of them are planning to go two-year, 112, four-year, seven military, 31 into the workforce, and two stay-at-home caregivers, so that's their plans right now, so appreciate that report, we'll continue to kind of keep that updated. This one is a little bit more detailed than I think we've seen, so, so anyway, good. And then we have our PBIS goals, and so Mr. Gilbert's here, if you have any questions on that particular report?
Just to comment.
Okay.
I feel as though we've had Leader and me in place at the schools for a few years, and that especially for the kids that are in the middle school right now, they would have been exposed to that and about being responsible for one's behavior and how to conduct oneself, and that I'm still surprised, although I have it in perspective, how few the behavioral referrals are, but I'm surprised that we have 220 of those kids being disrespectful to staff. I'm just surprised.
220 referrals, right?
Yes, and they were for defiance or disrespect of staff members, and I'm surprised by that. Is anybody else?
And that's not 220 kids, that's?
220 incidences.
Incidences, yes.
So multiple.
So one kid might account for multiple.
Okay.
So in fact, actually, about 90 or so percent of our kids get zero or one referral per year.
So.
And that's still.
We have a subset of kids that just can't quite get it.
Yeah, and, you know.
I mean, middle school, we say back to middle school.
Yeah, and I, and I get it, and I, and I understand that I'm the one that picks on this. I'm just, you know, when we're exposing our kids to all of this stuff and we're making these investments, I'm just surprised that we're still having as many incidences.
Yeah, and that's why one of our goals is to improve that.
Right, and I get that.
And it's not, you know.
It just surprises.
And the other thing is, if you think about it, that there's six class periods a day, and, you know, at the middle school, there's 650 kids in every class period times 170 days, so if you look at how many class periods, there's actually a write-up, you know, 170 times six, out of about 1,000 or so, about one out of every five, there's a, there's a write-up of some sort.
Well, and we're having.
But yes, it is something that.
But we're having less than one kid.
Yeah.
Per day at the middle school.
Per 100 students.
Per 100 students, in any. Per hundred students in any trouble at all. So I want to be clear that I have it in perspective. I'm just surprised.
Yeah, that's what we know from the data, I know that's last year's, but I think sometimes the defiance is, you know, they've actually, you've broken the dress code and they've actually a couple of times. And I think that's, it could be viewed as defiance, but then really that's still just that.
And sometimes we want to prefer on something, that's how we do it. We say, hey, we're going to be really consistent with their expectations and when you don't meet them, we're going to hold you accountable.
Okay.
And like I said, Ms. Smith pointed out, they want to get a little more clear on their dress code this year. So they've had a few more of those kinds of write-ups because they say, hey, early on, we want to make sure that if you don't follow rules, you know that we're going to enforce them and then you hope that that kind of levels it out.
Okay, so these aren't kids that are necessarily just looking at their instructor, their teacher and saying, no, I'm not going to do that. That helps. Okay. I'm done.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
I can just assure you that we're keeping it on our radar screen.
I do.
I always remind everyone that though we get a year older and wiser, our clientele stays the same age. So, you know, we have to continually teach and reteach.
And I appreciate, it's a work in progress.
It is, and but.
New leadership.
We work hard at it.
I know you do.
One of our new reports, and I'd like to thank Leanne and whoever else helped you with this, is we looked at our dual enrollment numbers. So because that's becoming much more of a, you know, a bigger deal and we have the community scholarship that some generous sponsors provide through our On Track partnership with Sky CTC and then of course Kentucky's Work Ready Dual Credit Scholarship, there's lots of opportunity for our students. And so we've given you a report to tell you what our kids are taking and how many are taking those courses this past school year. So any questions on that one?
No, it's awesome.
And then finally, I want to share our school nurse report. We love our school nurses and we also have our new primary care clinic partnership with the Medical Center, Primary Care Center, and it's been a really good start. That clinic is open to all students in Simpson County, schools, all staff, their immediate families and retirees. And it's been a good start, we're pleased with that, but this is just the nurses and who they worked with only during August. So you can see they're busy.
I have a question. Will our students be able to get flu shots this year through this program or is this something that's not going to be offered?
They, I mean, they can get a flu shot there, but it's just like going.
To the health department, right?
To the primary care clinic or.
And we have our school physician, they actually come on site and we have specific days set, so if a parent wanted to bring their kid to get a flu shot and they're on our insurance, they can. And if they're not, they simply pay the monies or fall with their own.
They can definitely get flu shots at the clinic too.
Yeah, we have some, had some discussion earlier this week that this is going to be a really bad flu season, so that might be something that we might be able to look into as far as trying to get more of the kids immunized this year, maybe encourage it a little bit more.
None of the staff had their opportunity and.
Yeah, and they'll be made up date in October for those that did get it. But yes, they can, their parent wants to take them over their financial year.
Okay. And we'll look into, see what options are available to the students.
It's supposed to be bad.
Of course, they can also, you know, go to their, you know, family physician. That concludes the reports and I appreciate the staff who helped put those together.
Next item is the consent agenda. Any motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. By Heidi, any discussion on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? If she passes. The next is action items and the first one is to approve the 2018-2019 working budget to be submitted electronically to KDE Division of Finance.
Motion.
Nancy, second by Jennifer.
Well, you have a copy of the working budget in your board materials. It is 47 pages long and our chief financial officer, Amanda Spears, is here and she's worked tirelessly putting this together and we're trying to keep up with all the moving parts, but I think we have a strong budget under the board's leadership. We're in strong financial position and we want to remain that way. We were proud to be able to give our staff a 1% raise this past year and so we appreciate that and that's in the budget. Amanda, anything else you want to mention or highlight in the budget?
I'd just point out that, you know, just remember that we downsize budget for on-bi-ha payments because that's both revenue and expense at the end of the year. So that's the difference between the last year actuals and the current year budget. Our budget isn't less than what last year is going to be. We're going to be pushing probably 40,000 by the time we book our on-bi-has at the end of the year.
Forty million?
Over 40,000.
Getting a little nervous, but.
It's a very small district.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's very consistent to last year's numbers.
So any particular questions? I'd like to thank Amanda and staff who helped.
Big job.
Great job.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to approve purchase of two school buses using general funds.
Motion.
Second by Jennifer, discussion on this item.
Well, you have the recommendation for Mr. Delk and Mr. Pendleton. Mr. Delk, who I think is the vice president or president-elect of the Kentucky Association of Pupil Transportation, is actually at a meeting for that right now that they're having. But he's sent, you know, the recommendation for two 72-passenger buses. We have a succession plan that we've been following. We've been disciplined in purchasing our buses every year to maintain a strong, reliable fleet and we're recommending that you approve these purchases. And of course, we're very close to finishing those that were bought on the KISTA program and now we're just buying them by cash and we're not having to pay any interest on those. So Amanda, you got anything else?
This is our inclusion effort.
Question, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Next is the request for release of committed general fund construction dollars to fund safety and security upgrades.
Motion.
Heidi, second by Jennifer, discussion on this item.
Well, as you know, we have about $673,000 of funds committed for future construction as of our June 30, end of the fiscal year. And Amanda and I worked with Craig and staff to make some plans for some of our safety upgrades that we're working toward. And you can see in the memo there to help pay for the vestibule. We want to do some work out here on the entrance here, which is really rough, coming into the high school parking lot. And we'll have to give a shout-out to the county who's going to help us with that and we're just going to pay them, so we got a much better cost on that. And then we want to do some very creative ballards out in front of Franklin Simpson High School that the ever-talented Jeremy Loveall, who I just saw on social media, he and his students helped repair the, some of the iron fencing that got knocked over downtown. But he's working with us and the students to build these special ballards that we look forward to unveiling and you see the costs on those, so that's our recommendation. Want to see if you'll have any questions. What's, Amanda, do you know right off, we have about 32,000?
Fifty-five plus the cost. And there's some, a few costs that are not in there. When we get the high school vestibule completed, we'll have to have some cabinetry and then some electrical upgrade with our intercom and panting systems to be moved out there, but that, I mean, those will be minimal.
And there's, so there's a possibility we could come back on some of the other safety initiatives to ask you to uncommit some additional funds later, but this is what we're prepared to at this time.
Comments, questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Next is to approve the keeping bus miles reimbursement rate at $1.46 per mile for special trips.
Motion.
Second by Jennifer, discussion on this item.
Last year, I guess Amanda and Craig and Tammy and I'm not sure who else helped, but they really relooked at the reimbursement rate for use of our buses and tried to, you know, get that as lean as possible to cover our costs, but yet make sure, you know, because really who's paying this are our schools. So in some ways, you know, Robin Peter paid Paul, but we wanted to have a fair rate and but this is a leaner rate than we've had in the past, but we want to recommend that the board keep it the same. Amanda kind of looked at it and the numbers haven't really changed measurably, so we're recommending to maintain it at $1.46 per mile for special trips on our buses, like when we go on field trips and athletic events and that sort of thing.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Next is the request to approve the West Ed Formative Assessment Pilot Study at Franklin Simpson Middle School and a memorandum of understanding.
Motion. Second.
Heidi, second by Nancy, discussion on this item.
Well, you have the documents in the board materials that describe what they're wanting to do and memorandum of understanding. Shalina, or somebody?
Leanne's helped a lot with this too. Basically, one of our sixth grade science teachers, Raina, had this opportunity, a protocol posed to her and she would like to try it out and obviously, well, I don't know that you have yet to see, but you can see that our science board is something that we're going to focus on in the middle school. And I like it, you know, they tried to get more hands-on with our robotics and different things at that sixth grade level coming in. And so this will be kind of like a game-based unit without the ecosystems and so I was just like, you all do consider letting us utilize this unit by this company. And I do believe that the teachers involved in it, they get a small side into their work, but mainly they're doing the whole formative assessment with these kids, which we like, especially in science, because sometimes we see it more so in math and reading and so it's got all the pieces that we typically ask for in our negotiations.
So as far as all the district assurances, we've got those outlined in Tupper.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is request to approve emergency certification for April Marlin for SES Special Education LBD teacher.
Motion.
Motion by Heidi, second by Jennifer, discussion on this item.
You have a memo from Dr. McIntosh kind of explaining to stay in compliance with the certification requirements. We need to get the board's authorization for an emergency certification for Ms. Marlin for just the school year. And I think, how soon will she be done?
She'll be finished with it just this semester. She'll only have one class. She's a 17-year veteran.
She's a veteran, yes.
National Board Certified Teacher, has had a passion for our students for years, requested to have them in her class, did extra interventions with them. This is what she wanted to do. She went back and paid for her degree to pick up special ed when she's not getting a raise for it. Thought she was going to be finished at the end of last semester and it was one of those things that Western came back and said, oh, you need to take a 200 level class, even though she's National Board Certified with teachers. So she's taken that one class, will be certified. Even though it's emergency certification, she's not, she's not that type of teacher. She was truly the best.
Well, let me, let me explain it this way. She has a master's degree. She is National Board Teacher Certified. She's a 17-year veteran. She had to take a class that actually she's credentialed to teach. I tried to work with the dean at the time about that and work with some of the staff, but anyway, there were some other, there were some options that they put in front of her, but they were actually more complicated and less attractive. So ultimately, she chose to take a class, so.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Next is the request to approve emergency certification of Stacy Graves for SES Special Education LBD teacher.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Nancy, discussion on this item.
I think it's fairly similar situation. She's not quite as experienced, but she's an experienced teacher and they wanted to add a heart for these students, so we asked you to approve.
Yes, she's had seven years. She was the second thing. She decided she wanted to take this up as her masters. She has two classes, one this semester and next semester, and she'll be finished. She just, this was the area that she wanted to be getting to and it's just, has worked with its students and volunteered to do the interventions and everything else and it's just the best fit for it.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to approve the shortened school day for two students in Simpson Elementary Schools.
Motion. Second. Motion.
Motion by Nancy, second by.
Sure.
Discussion on this item.
You have the documentation in your board materials and, you know, some students, because of, you know, their situation and disability, so that's beneficial to do a shortened day. There's a couple of kids we're working with their families and staff to offer that, so we need your approval.
Yes, the psych choice was actually one that approached us, some of those students and felt like that they needed to have a shortened school day. During that time, we had also looked at a transition plan that as they are successful every two weeks, we've opened them at 30 minutes. So we have a plan in place to help them get back into a full day. That's our goal.
Awesome.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to approve the contract for gifted and talented services at Simpson Elementary School.
Motion.
Second. Second by Nancy, discussion on this item.
You have a copy of the proposal and your materials and a copy of the proposed contract and Ms. Hale's a veteran of our school district, retired, but she's been working with us now, is this, would this be?
Yes.
Second year? And she's, she's really good working with our children and we really are trying to ramp up our primary talent pool in services. And one of the things that we've been talking about is even capturing those, you know, high potential students from targeted groups and so hopefully we can make some dent in that as well, close that excellence gap that we've been talking about. But Shalina, you got anything to add?
No, you know, obviously we're having Ms. Wade as our elementary consultant as well, but what we're going to try to do, because Ms. Hale was spread very thin between those top two classes in all three grade levels, in the reading and the math, we're going to get Ms. Wade in math at Lincoln for us, so we're going to have her do those top math as, you know, we have the teachers in there as well, obviously, but then a teaching consultant company. And then Ms. Hale actually has authored her own poetry book. So she, her, really, her passion is in reading and writing and so we're going to have her focusing on that. And they even, you know, tried to call and say, can she come to our teacher conferences? She just explains this to parents, I don't think it's not a great, you know, but they are very anxious to get her started because of the benefits that they've saw from her last year.
How many students are involved in gifted talent at Simpson? You know, we're all hand.
Well, that's the primary talent pool and I, to be honest with you, I can, you know the numbers right offhand, I would say it's a, it's a lot.
When, when they leave Simpson and go to Lincoln, does the pool stay?
When, when they leave Simpson and go to Lincoln, does the pool stay about the same size or does it decrease?
It does usually decrease a little bit. But remember, we're trying to make sure that now we're doing, obviously, COBAT is our test, but we're also trying the creativity test and leadership. And we actually have one student in particular that spoke opening day, if you remember that little man. Okay, so we ran multiple tests right now, trying to make sure that we're servicing his needs on the creativity scale because there's some other issues that sometimes cause him to not, you know, perform on other tests. But again, we're trying to have a wide variety of assessments so that we can cast a bigger net. But yeah, typically, you will see that kind of narrow at Lincoln when they're formally identified.
Will these students get to participate at all in Edge Academy types of activities?
Oh, yeah. Because remember, we, we still have three open days at Edge. So that is big for me. You know, I don't, even though we started that academy with our fourth and fifth grade, I want doctors K through twelve, you know, in that facility. And I think we've actually even increased that. You would think it would kind of narrow it with the academy, but it really hasn't. Ms. Sheffield had West End of students there last Friday, creating some kind of glass experiment. And then on the off Fridays, she has Mr. Graves possibly from Middle School coming over and working at that Edge. So we're actually finding the usage of that facility and a lot of the activities and lessons that she's planning. Being we lost way more this year than maybe perhaps in the past. But again, she's, she's just, I know that you've all gotten to meet, I think, Ms. Sheffield. She's just dynamite. And so she's just getting out there, making the connections. Some people are doing some of the really good stuff that she's got going on. Multiple people are doing, do a lot of the same activities that those kids are doing.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to approve contract for orientation mobility specialist visual impairment service.
Motion. Second.
Heidi, second by Nancy. Questions, comments, yes?
We have a copy of the contract in your materials, and Ms. Maxwell's here. If you have any questions of, or we just have a need for these services.
And a student that lives for Michigan, that is visually impaired. And so she has to have the services required to be able to get around.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approve a request to conduct a classified salary study.
Second.
Nancy, second by Heidi.
Well, you know, as you all know, we, we've been talking about, for a long time, you know, keeping our salary and benefit packages competitive to attract and retain the best quality employees as possible. It's been a priority of the board, it's a priority of mine, and certainly the priority of our staff here. Dr. McIntosh has a responsibility to kind of keep her eye on that for us. And so she'll signal me from time to time that there might be an area we need to look at. And one of the areas that we're most concerned about are this area we kind of call the middle skill gap. Those, those jobs that require some kind of post-secondary training, but not necessarily a college degree. You know, things like our bus mechanics, our electrician, our HVAC technicians, utility technicians that we have require some advanced training. And so we want to do a study around that. And then at the same time, you know, it's been a challenge to give the raises that we've been giving. And they're, they've been modest raises mostly, albeit much appreciated by staff and helpful. But when you talk about some of our lower-wage earners in the district percent raise, doesn't really move the needle very much. And so we want to do a study to look at that more carefully and closely. Make sure that we're competitive with the industry standard and come back to you all sometime in the spring with a proposal and a recommendation. And so we're looking at several things, including even some of the structures that we have in place. You know, following this on the agenda. Proposal around the energy management specialists that we've been talking about. With, you know, we're also looking at some other potential restructuring efforts that might give us some great benefits as well. So that'll be part of the study and part of the recommendation. We'll come back in the, I don't know why I'm doing that. So, so anyway, Millie, do you have anything to add on that?
I think you did a really good job.
So we've been working together closely on this. And she and Craig Delk will be working closely around particularly the middle skill gap issue that we're talking about. But we're already gathering information, and we're kind of reaching out to all kinds of sectors and, you know, other district partners in the region to share information and make sure we're moving in the right direction. So.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to approve job description and stipend for energy management specialist position.
Motion.
Motion by Heidi, second by Nancy.
So you have a draft of the job description for an energy management specialist and also a proposal for revision to the maintenance salary schedule for that stipend for the position. As you all know, I think we've discussed, I mean, I think we've been talking about some kind of energy management strategy for about six years. And we've looked at some external partners to provide that service and, and even had them here at board meetings multiple times, but never landed on a match that we felt comfortable with as a board team or district. And at some point along the way, I have to give Mr. Webster some kudos. He, he said, well, can we just do this in-house ourselves? And so went back to staff, and we started talking about it. And Robert and his team and, and Mr. Delk had kind of wrapped their minds around what we could do. And then that's the proposal in front of you. So we, we think we can do it in-house. We think we can move the needle. We've got some creative ideas of how to get the whole school community involved. But that'll be for another meeting as we kind of develop some of those ideas. But we'd like to get started. And one of the things I'll mention is that, you know, we're proud to have a couple of Energy Star schools, but we're not even close to being one of the most energy-efficient districts. In fact, we're one of the least energy-efficient school districts in Kentucky. And if you look at some metrics, and we want to move the needle on that. But we need someone who's going to be the champion of that. So this energy manager specialist position will be that. Robert White's here. He's worked hard on this. So if you have any questions, I'm sure he can answer them as well.
We had great success with managing our energy consumption over the summer and managed to save thousands.
We're still reconciled in July, the last I heard. Is that right, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Have we got any further along on that or?
No, sir. The electric platform chose without any knowledge. I guess a concern for what we were doing to change their billing cycle right in the heart of when we were trying to calculate real numbers. So we're going to have to pull it out day by day.
Calculated.
Preliminary's from June were good.
Yeah, we, as you all know, we have good preliminary from June. And so we, you know, we feel good about that side of it. And of course, the other side of that was we, we saw some real savings on the custodial services side. And so that was another exciting part of that. So, so anyway, any questions? We ask you to approve, and we're ready to get started.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Motion by Nancy to the jury.
Second.
All in favor?
We'll have Les here to call questions.
I know, a question.
All right, I think you can still make it to the choir concert, seven o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, to society, things. Okay, come on up.
It's all right.
Slipper name on it.
Can you smell it?
Oh, yeah, it smells good.